Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for attending our April 20th Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance. I just wanted to say, great job. I heard all those wonderful voices out there doing their pledge. Great job. So on behalf of the Board of Education, welcome to our high school and to our meeting. We're excited for tonight. We just came out of executive session, so we're just gonna do a roll call.
Mr. Lucchetti.
Present.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Scheid.
Here.
Mrs. Callahan-Caroleo. Mrs. Tedesco. Mrs. Rivers. And Mrs. Rowland. Thank you very much.
Yep, sorry about that. Alright, so I need a confirmation of the agenda for May 23rd. And are there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Lucchetti, there are three individual motions that have been added to the agenda.
Thank you. So as far as correspondence to the Board, from May 23rd, we have the Board of Education receiving information from dates April 20th to May 19th. So if you see your names there, we did receive your information and it has been presented to the Board. We're moving on. We're gonna head right into some recognitions right now, and I'm gonna introduce Dr. Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Lucchetti. I'm gonna come to the front now, and I think we have some students who are gonna be recognized this evening. So this is the moment that everyone's been waiting for. It's good. Can you hear me? Yep, okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Graham. I'm the Superintendent of Schools. For those of you that don't know me, I was just telling the Board that this is, I think, my 55th day in the district. So it's certainly exciting to be here to celebrate some of our student accomplishments. And this evening, we are presenting these awards on behalf of the district and our Director of Mathematics, Mrs. Michaelopoulos, who is home ill today and unfortunately unable to attend. Tonight, we're going to recognize elementary and middle school mathematicians in our district focusing on two events that they participated in. The first is the Suffolk County Math Competition. All students that competed in the Suffolk County Math Competition, please come up when we call your name and stand with your principal. I think I'm flanked by principals over here. I think we're gonna, we're doing Belmont first, in no particular order. Alright, so from Belmont, we have Akib Aziz. Come over and join Ms. Jackson. Jason Barone. Abigail Boyle. Alexis Ferguson. Lucas Freund. Connor Kame. Hazeem Lawal. Yaseen Noori. Michael Peach. And Prabnor Tore. And I apologize about the names. If I mispronounce your names, I truly... And I apologize about the names. If I mispronounce your names, I truly do apologize. Working on it. Let's hear it for the Belmont students. Okay, from DeLuca. We have Mr. Fantuzzi. Aiden Arbass. Lorenzo Arbass. Sofia Barrero. Vincent Buffalino. Ethan Cuervo. Gavin Zedman. Madison Ledger. Marco Mays. Uzoki Okorum. And Gianna Ramdani. I think we have a couple of students missing this evening. They're doing math homework right now. From MGB, Ms. Lark. Noah Berghauser. Luigi Busarath. Angel Gores. Haley Guzman. Emma Keen. Logan Leonardo. Emma Meishner. Kendra Peck. Roman Taylor. And Giselle Townsend. Alright, let's hear it one more time for those MGB students. From Parliament. We have Mr. Olson. Jaden Dennis. Shariae Jane. Fox Morris. Bennett Nolan. Frank Nunziato. Santiago Ortiz. Oliver Ramirez. Matthew Salazar. Bryden Schmidt. And Sabina Sonmez. Congratulations, Parliament. And lastly, we have Woods with Ms. Archer. Anthony Budd. Lilian Burgos. Natalie Giamarino, Giamarinaro, sorry. Liam Isaacson. Killian McAffany. Brandon McNamara. Ryan McNamara. Rumaja Moyes. Santiago Oreggo Ramirez. And Michael Scott. And I said, you know, the last school, I meant last elementary school. I didn't forget Robert Moses, of course, and we have Ms. Sanders up here. So our Robert Moses Middle School students. Pedro Calaballo. Howard Dwyer. Bemmy Joseph. Michaela Mitchell Wasserman. Owen Polito. Gavin Chen. Gabriella Farber. Lauren Lobosco. Dean Maudy. Abby Dayhill. Robert Ferandina. Nicholas Mejia. Daniel Oliphant. Harrison Davis. Jack Halloran. Jacob Miller. And Mia Patrizo. Just so everyone knows, as all of our students struggled with their math problems, I made it challenging for our principals because I went out of alphabetical order, I think, so. So they're all struggling with that right now a little bit, but it's okay to experience struggle, right? So we'll take our photo for our Robert Moses students. So for those students that were just recommended for the Suffolk County Math, or honored for the Suffolk County Math Competition, just so you have an idea of what they were honored for, for the first time in North Babylon's history, we had representation from all five of our elementary schools and Robert Moses in the Suffolk County Math Competition, which was held on May 11th. This is a testament to the enthusiasm and determination of our students, who willingly sacrificed their time, whether it was during lunch and recess, to participate in this competition. We were competing against other districts that have had year-long math clubs. Over forty schools across the county participated. With great enthusiasm, our students embraced the challenges presented to them. There were many topics that were investigated, from exploring the details of area and perimeter, to delving into the complexities of sequences and series. Each student tackled the problems with relentless dedication. These young mathematicians demonstrated not only their individual problem-solving abilities, but also their capacity to work collaboratively on them. We would also like to highlight the exceptional performance of DeLuca's 4th grade team. They placed 5th in their grade. Also, DeLuca's 4th graders, Uzoki Okorum and Vincent Buffalino. Uzoki claimed a remarkable 6th place while Vincent secured a 9th place in the individual round. These exceptional performances serve as an inspiration and speak volumes to their mathematical prowess. Through events like the Suffolk County Math Competition, our district is being exposed to experiences that will provide our students with invaluable opportunities to engage in mathematics at younger ages. These experiences pave the way for a future filled with limitless possibilities where our mathematicians can truly shine. Let's hear it one more time for all of our participants. And let's have the 4th grade team from DeLuca come up and we'll present them with their plaque. Ms. Michaelopoulos also wanted me to share that this evening, we are also going to give attention to an ongoing district initiative of First in Math. This has captured the minds of our students. Through First in Math, students have had the opportunity to self-pace or engage in game-based learning, improving their fluency in other concepts aligned to the New York State standards. This digital platform has become a powerful tool in cultivating a love for mathematics. Before we delve into the state competition, I'd like to acknowledge and celebrate a few exceptional teams and individuals who have achieved remarkable success in their First in Math journey. At this time, I would like to invite up Ms. Rebhold's kindergarten class from DeLuca Elementary. That's a group of mathematicians right there. As a class, Ms. Rebhold's students hold an impressive #2 ranking in New York State for kindergarten. Let's hear it one more time for our kindergartners. Next, I would like to invite up Ms. Khrushner's 2nd grade class from MGB. Ms. Khrushner's students also hold an impressive #2 ranking in New York State for 2nd grade. I'd also like to invite up Ms. Manning's 3rd grade class from Parliament Place. Very impressive. Ms. Manning's class proudly claims the top spot of #1 Grade 3 Class in New York State. Now, Ms. Manning just informed us that this is the second year in a row for 1st place in New York State as well. We also have some students that ranked in New York State. So we're gonna ask the following students to come up when we call their name, okay? 3rd grade student Riley Renhack from William E. DeLuca ranked 8th in New York State. Kindergarten student Mahir Kasru from DeLuca as well ranked 10th in New York State. And Aiden Guzman from Vedder secured an outstanding #2 ranking for all 2nd graders in New York State. An incredible feat, isn't it? These students and their classes have shown an unwavering commitment to mathematics. They dedicated countless hours to solving over a million math problems, demonstrating their remarkable work ethic, dedication, and a genuine passion for math. Let us take one more moment to acknowledge our students this evening. We're going to honor one more group, an exceptional group of students who qualified for 1st in Math for the New York State Competition. On April 30th, the district competed in the New York State Region 1st in Math Competition. Two teams from the district emerged as qualifiers for the state competition, which was held at the University of Albany this past weekend. Teachers and students, please come up as we call your names. From Belmont Elementary School, Mr. Biondo and Mrs. Grin's 2nd Grade Team, Harrison And also competing in the state competition was, from Parliament Place, Ms. Manning's 3rd Grade Team, Musa Hashemi, Jackson Medina, and Emma Negron. I want to just take a moment to thank all of our parents and families for their support as well, because all the teachers here know that a lot of this wouldn't happen without your support. So congratulations and thank you. And that concludes our student recognitions this evening. So I get the pleasure of being a nice guy, because all these kids gotta get home, right? And they probably want maybe a little ice cream or something like that, right? So I shouldn't have brought that up? Yeah, sorry. But anyway, if you guys want to take off before the business meeting, feel free to do that now, and we'll just give you guys some time to head out. But thank you again, and congratulations to all the winners, and thank you for coming out. So we have one more recognition before the superintendent's report, and we're gonna call Ms. Kathy Dean up to give that out.
No, I'm just the lucky one holding the award. It's really, Marie Rivera heads our Public Relations Committee. We have a lot of awesome members from all 7 buildings. This year, at the New York State United Teachers Representative Assembly in Albany, our Public Relations Committee, with again Marie in charge, was given 2 awards. One was a Community Service Award for all the events, all the activities that we do to give back to the community. And the second was, this is the 21st consecutive year that the North Babylon Teachers Organization has won this, more than any other in all of New York State. So we're super proud of all their work, all their efforts. They have been raising money for the community, giving back to the community for over 21 years, and it was really nice to see them awarded. So I don't belong standing up here. It's Marie and her committee. We're just here to support them. So thank you for all you do. Come on up, and your committee, come on down. They're the real rock stars here, so. Thank you for all you do. You're the best.
Congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So I think, you know, I had mentioned earlier that this is the 55th day in the district. I'm not counting board meetings, but I do know that in all of the board meetings that have been in the district, this is, you know, the 2nd time that the MBTO has been recognized for community service and the outreach that they do for our community. So I certainly wanted to thank the MBTO and certainly the committee here, and congratulate them. Yeah, so a few more things on the superintendent's report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lucetti. The first thing that I wanted to do is congratulate Mr. Baki and the entire business office on their work with the 23-24 school budget, and thank the community for their overwhelming support of the budget. Similarly, I wanted to congratulate all the candidates who ran for the Board of Education. It certainly takes a lot of courage to enter that arena and run a campaign. So I want to thank the community for their support of the budget, and congratulate all of the candidates. We do have some of our varsity athletes still competing. Our baseball team and flag football teams competed in the playoffs over the past 2 weeks. Unfortunately, their playoff runs came to an end, but our softball team continues on, and they had a game today which they actually won. So our girls softball team will continue in the playoffs. And our boys and girls track teams are competing at the county championships today at Connect Quad High School. And while I don't have results coming in at the moment from Mr. Freeson, I'm told that we definitely will have athletes competing at the state and national level as the spring goes on. And I encourage everyone to visit our website, our social media feeds, to see how our student athletes are doing. I did want to give the community a little bit of an update related to the middle school. During the last week of April, we did have several fights that involved middle school students, and in the time since, we've had some parent inquiries about safety and student safety at the middle school. And I want to assure everyone in the community, in the middle school community in particular, that our student safety and staff safety and security are our #1 priority, and certainly that's the priority for the team at Robert Moses Middle School. In the time following those events, Ms. Hissandras and the building team have made some procedural changes that have had positive results, and we look forward to that continuing. Additionally, you may have heard, there was a lockdown drill conducted at the middle school last week during the lunch period. And following the drill, there were some rumors circulating on social media about the circumstances around the drill. As is the case with any of our safety drills, the team debriefed and went through things that went well, and others that need to be revised as we move forward. And I encourage everyone that when you have questions or concerns related to events or happenings at the schools, that you reach out to those individuals in the building or department for answers. Ms. Hissandras, in the time following that drill, and her team have had several conversations with parents and families to discuss concerns that were brought to their attention about the details of this event, and they are committing to continuing getting better. I could tell you on a very positive note, I was in the middle school today, and I met with some of our students, the student leaders at the middle school. We discussed the fights, we discussed the lockdown drill, and they shared concerns that are almost universal for middle school students, regardless of the district, regardless of the school. They also shared that they loved the middle school, music teachers in particular, they said. They also said that they have great subjects, teachers throughout all of their subjects, that there's always something to do, that there's a fight at the middle school, and that there are a lot of social activities. And one of the things that makes Robert Moses stand out is the diversity and the opportunities to learn about others. Anytime that I've spoken with students in our district, I've felt incredibly optimistic about, you know, our path moving forward and continuing to get better as a district, and this group was no different than the student groups that I've met with already. They were fantastic. I encourage everyone again to keep your eyes on our website, our social media, for updates that are taking place throughout the district. At this time of year, we wish all of our students the best with their final exams, their region's exams. And before we move on, I wanted to just acknowledge that last night, we had a celebratory evening at Scope School District Awards, and at that time, a number of individuals in our district were honored. We had Board of Education trustee Heather Rowland honored. Congratulations, Heather. We had one of our paraprofessionals, Teresa Rasso, honored. And we had one of our teachers, Bill Monroe, honored as well. It was a really nice celebratory evening that recognized school employees or school-related professionals or volunteers from districts across Long Island. That concludes the superintendent's report this evening. Mr. Lucetti, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. We really appreciate the update. It's really, again, you know, something super important for us all to be able to, like, you know, Dr. Graham said, to review, reflect, you know, and, you know, discuss and make things better on an everyday basis. So I just want to give the board an opportunity, if they had any questions regarding any of that stuff from the report. Good? Okay, awesome. So we're gonna move on. Again, thank you so much. And congratulations to all of our winners, and congratulations again to all of the winners tonight.
Hey, Matt, just one thing we should thank Teresa Caraleo for all her work the last 3 years on the board, even though she wasn't re-elected. I want to thank her for all her commitment to us.
She has one more meeting, though, next month, so I was gonna take that into consideration. I didn't want to do it too early, but thank you, Bob. So I agree with Bob. Teresa, thank you so much. You will be missed. I'm sure you won't be missed too much, because you'll be here as a very involved community member, as you always have been. Awesome. With that being said, this is time for public participation. This section of the board, time gives Board of Education the opportunity to recognize residents who wish to raise a question or make a brief statement on agenda items right now. There'll be time later for stuff off of the agenda, but the time limit will be 5 minutes. So if anyone has any questions related to the agenda or agenda items on leave, please head up to the microphone. Okay, so seeing nobody heading up that way right now, we'll continue on with our agenda. So I need approval for a couple of board meetings. We're looking at April 20th, April 25th, May 9th, and May 16th. So I need a motion. Motion, Mr. Shide, 2nd.
2nd.
2nd, Ms. Tedesco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have some personnel actions. We're going to resignations, terminations, and leaves of absence. The superintendent of school recommends the Board of Education approve the resignations, terminations, leaves of absence, and/or position abolitions in accordance with the applicable provisions of educational law and civil service law cited in Schedules A, B, and C. Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rowland, 2nd.
2nd.
2nd. Ms. Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have appointments, tenure, and salary changes. Superintendent of school recommends the Board of Education approve the employment appointments, tenure appointments, and salary changes in accordance with the applicable provisions of educational law and civil service law cited in Schedules A, B, and C. Any motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Shide, 2nd.
2nd.
2nd, Mr. Myers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have omnibus, it's a long, so it's from A to double D. And there's a bunch of stuff in there, so I'll just give you guys a couple seconds to look over if you have any questions. If not, I will look for a motion.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rowland, 2nd. 2nd, Ms. Tedesco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. There is a cool few things in there. I just want to say thank you for the scholarship donation, a bunch of other things that got approval as far as fundraisers and stuff like that, some contracts, so just want to say again, thank you for those things. We have some individual motions we're gonna go through. So the first one is a... So, the first one is a superintendent's hearing appeal where as the Board of Education has reviewed the record of disciplinary action proceeding pursuant to educational law 3214 concerning a student, certain student A. Whereas the Board of Education has duly deliberated concerning the record of said proceeding and considered the arguments raised by the appellant parent of student A in executive session. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby denies the appeal of the parent of student A in its entirety and affirms the decision of our superintendent of schools and further directs that the district clerk notify the parents and the students of this determination. I need a roll call vote. First, I need a motion. Motion, Ms. Rowland, second. Second, Ms. Rivers, all in favor? Well, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Mr. Lucetti.
Yes.
Mr. Myers. Mrs. Tedesco. Mrs. Rivers. Mrs. Rowland. Mr. Shide. And Mrs. Calhoun Caraleo. Thank you.
Second one also. Yep, we have two. So, another superintendent's hearing appeal where as the Board of Education has viewed the record of disciplinary proceeding, excuse me, record of disciplinary proceeding pursuant to educational law 3214 concerning student B. Whereas the Board of Education has duly deliberated concerning the record of said proceeding and considers the arguments raised by the appellant parent of student B in executive session. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby denies the appeal of the parent of student B in its entirety and affirms the decision of the superintendent of schools and further directs that the district clerk notify the parents of the student in this determination. I need a motion. Motion, Mr. Myers, second. Second, Ms. Tedesco. I need a roll call vote.
Mr. Lucetti.
Yes.
Mr. Myers. Mr. Shide. Mrs. Calhoun Caraleo. Mrs. Tedesco. Mrs. Rivers. And Mrs. Rowland. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion carries. We have a nurse's ratification of a contract. So, resolve the recommendation of superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves a memorandum of agreement with the Association of Registered Professional Nurses of North Babylon covering the period of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2025, and hereby authorizes President of the Board of Education execute a contract incorporating such terms and conditions into a new collective bargaining agreement. I need a motion. Motion, Mr. Myers, second. Second, Mr. Shide, all in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have a sick bank. Recommend the Board of Education approve the signed letter of agreement with the creation of a sick bank listed for confidential attachment A as more fully discussed in our executive session hereby authorizes the Board President to execute said agreement on behalf of the Board. I need a motion. Motion, Ms. Rowland, second. Second, Mr. Shide, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. We got to do that, two, right? Okay, E, stipulation of settlement. Resolve the Board of Education hereby approves a stipulation of settlement with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local 237 resolving AAA case number and Purb case number and authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute said agreement on behalf of the Board of Education. I need a motion. Motion, Mr. Shide, second. Second, Ms. Rowland, all in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Stipulation of agreement. Resolve the Board of Education hereby approves a stipulation of settlement with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local 237 resolving AAA case number and authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute said agreement on behalf of the Board of Education. Need a motion. Motion, Ms. Rivers, second. Second, Mr. Shide, all in favor? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have a resolution for public session where as the superintendent of school has preferred charges against the employee named in executive session pursuant to section 3020A of New York State Education Law. Whereas the Board of Education has determined by a vote of a majority of all members of the Board that probable cause exists for the charges preferred against said employee by superintendent of schools. Be it resolved that the employee named in executive session is hereby suspended with pay pending a hearing on the charges and the final determination therefore. I need a motion. Motion, Ms. Tedesco, second. Second, Mr. Shide. Is this a roll call? Yes? Roll call vote.
Mr. Lucetti.
Yes.
Mr. Myers. Mrs. Rowland. Mrs. Rivers. Mrs. Tedesco. Mr. Shide. And Mrs. Calhoun Caraleo. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So, that's most of the business. So, now we have some reports. We had a build and inspection committee meeting tonight. I don't know if anyone wants to give a little update on that? Bob?
You want to go, Frank? Or me to go? I can start, you can fill in the blanks.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Yep. All right, so we were meeting tonight, so we have, our bids are supposed to come back tomorrow. We'll have a couple of days for the architects to go through it and divvy up the pricing, so then we'll get something late this week, early next week on the pricing for the projects that we're going to do, and then some of the ad alternates that we're going to have to make decisions on. We do have work that's already started, the little theater, I think you said, is almost complete, and the locker rooms have started, and then we have a bunch of work that we're waiting for the bids to come back on. I don't know if you want any details on that, on some of that work or not, so.
Yeah, so the bids that we're waiting to come back for, it's the Phase 5 summer work, so it's the high school family consumer science, high school library, high school cafeteria, and then we also have the middle school family consumer science, library, and auditorium. So, a lot of bids are all due back tomorrow morning, so we're going to have the architects compile that information and get it to us before the end of the week.
Awesome. Cool. Any questions from board members regarding that? Cool. That was only committee since the meeting, so that's all we have to. So, we're going to go on to public participation. So, basically, this is an opportunity, according to Board Policy 1510, the section of the agenda gives the Board of Education opportunity to recognize residents who would like to raise a question or make a brief statement on matters including but not limited to agenda items. The time available will be limited to five minutes for each question. And again, if anyone has any questions, please head on up to the mic. I'm not sure if that one's on, but there should be a button right up on the top, a green, hold it down, and it should turn green. Good, there you go. Name and location, address, area, whatever.
Sure. My name is Kim Como, 563 French Avenue. In 2020, my son graduated from Woods Road Elementary School in North Babylon. It was the same year that the pandemic hit, and all fifth grade students ended their elementary careers at home with no fanfare. However, leading up to graduation, myself and other members of the Woods Road Fifth Grade Committee held fundraisers, which we used to offset the costs of the end-of-year activities that never ended up taking place. We were assured by the Woods Road Administration that these funds raised by the hard-working parents in this district would, somewhere in the range of $1,500, would follow our students to the middle school and be placed in a pool of funds that would be used to pay for the activities for them during their time in middle school. That same fifth grader is now entering his eighth grade year, and unlike 2020, I'm looking forward to his graduation from middle school being filled with celebrations funded from that pool of funds that have gone silent for almost three years. However, the lack of knowledge and consistency by the North Babylon Administration and advisors about these funds and how it has been communicated has been quite alarming. To say that this has made me question how the North Babylon School District as a whole manages and maintains its financial records would be an understatement. Money that was supposed to go to our students raised by the hard-working parents in this district went missing and then found again. The inconsistency of the amounts that were found, something did not add up. It's time, this time, it was a case of missing money for celebration activities, but it makes me question as a whole what else has gone missing for important things. It's disappointing, however, I am happy that the money was found, but it is truly disappointing how this was all handled. It's time to do better for our students, especially when money is concerned that was raised by hard-working parents in this district. Especially when I was once told by administration that we are a very poor school district. This poor school district raised that money. I'm truly disappointed by the way this was all handled. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, I would, you know, just please make sure you bring that attention up to where it needs to go. If you're not having any luck in the right chain, make sure you bring it all the way up into the administration building. They'll be more than happy to, you know, discuss and go through things. Again, we've had some changes here over the years, so I can't tell you the timeline, but we'd be happy to listen and see, you know, again, like we said before, we need to learn from everything, and it's very important. So, thank you for coming and letting us know. Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Jen Napolitano, 234 Colonial Road. I'd like to speak again about the drill that was conducted at the middle school last week. I know it was addressed earlier, and it was said to be some rumors. However, I know that my daughter was a participant in this drill, and many others have come to me about their child having the same experience. It was very alarming, very upsetting. These kids were panicked, they were crying, they were shaking, some were hiding underneath tables. They did not know where to go. They were never told when there is a drill in the cafeteria, this is what you're going to do. I don't know about you, but if you're in an airport or if you're in an unfamiliar place and you don't know where to go, there's going to be chaos. That's not hard to figure out. So, that's number one. That's very upsetting. Half of the kids also did not hear the announcement, so they didn't know what the heck was going on. The ones that did still didn't know where to go, but they followed the directions of the teachers. Eventually, they were all escorted into the kitchen. The noise was apparently loud, the kids were crying, they were panicked, they were upset. I understand that. There was a teacher who was banging something on a metal countertop or sink. These children saw this. Not everyone, because it's a big area. To try and quiet them down, apparently, and this went on and on and on while the cries got louder, while the fear built up, and while these children thought that they were hearing gunshots. It doesn't matter if it was a, what kind of drill it was, whatever you want to call it, that's what they thought. So, I don't know why it was kind of swept under the rug. A general email went out. I contacted, I contacted who I needed to contact. I got basically a general email back saying, you know, it's being looked into. The students were then told the next day that they were being too noisy, that that teacher did not do anything wrong, that they need to do better. I don't like how that was handled. I don't like how the students were addressed the next day. Yes, I'm sure that there were some kids that were not doing what they should have been doing, but, I mean, the majority of them were scared out of their minds. So, I don't know if banging is supposed to calm anyone down? Would that calm any of you down if you're in a panicked situation, banging over and over and over again? And then they're told, she did nothing wrong, you guys did something wrong. We need to do better. They should have been told where to go. There's a process, and that's the point of these drills. They should have known what to do ahead of time, not when it was going to happen, but they should have been told ahead of time, look, if you're in the cafeteria, this is how it's going to go. Thank you.
Ms. Napolitano, I appreciate the feedback, and I know that you and I corresponded via email with your, respect to your concerns. I could tell you, part of our process for a debriefing was watching video. We do have videos in the cafeterias. We didn't see what you're sharing with us in terms of chaos or students hiding under tables or running. It wasn't visible. We also didn't see the students being spoken to ahead of the drill on both sides of the cafeteria and getting some information prior to that about what to do. With that being said, I don't want to minimize anyone's feelings during an emergency drill. They're scary for all of us, and they're a scary fact of our world and the way we have to unfortunately operate in schools at this time. Some of the things that we did uncover was a spoon was banged against a metal table, and it wasn't, you know, to mimic any shots of a gun or anything like that. It was to try to get students to be quiet at the time, and that's something, remember I said earlier, that when we debrief, we look into everything, and there are things that we want to confirm that we did well, and there are things that we need to continue to get better at. In this particular instance, that's one of the things that Ms. Hissandras and the team have discussed, and that's a change, you know, or guidance not to do that moving forward. So, I just, I asked everybody before to reserve judgment and not rush to maybe social media to share the perhaps rumors on these instances. When we look and when we debrief, we're not seeing that. And again, that's not to minimize anyone's feelings because we understand that this is an emotionally charged situation, but we did not see those things. We'll continue to look at our processes moving forward, and I know that Ms. Hissandras and the building team will continue to get better as we move forward. And part of that is conversations with our students, which have taken place. Part of that's conversations with our staff, which have also taken place. And part of that's communication with our parents and families, which took place immediately following that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. Any other questions?
Good evening. Gerard Morris, 167 East Book Avenue, that's located north of the parkway. I'm a talker, so I figured I'd write this down in essence of time. For years now, the North Babylon Elementary School District has employed power professionals, otherwise known, in most cases, as teacher aides. Teacher aides are non-instructional employees who are employed in accordance with civil service law. Power professionals provide non-teaching services and assist with behavior modification, hygienic needs, grading papers, making photocopies, and any other needs as directed by the classroom teacher to ensure a successful flow of instruction. Teacher assistants are instructional staff members who are hired in accordance with state education law and are like classroom teachers. Teaching assistants possess a certification issued by New York State Department of Education. Teacher assistants serve at a four-year probationary period and are granted tenure after successful completion. Teaching assistants provide the following. Work with the individual students and student groups on special instructional projects. Provide the classroom teacher with information about students, which will assist the classroom teacher in their ability to differentiate instruction. Assist students in the use of available instructional resources and development of instructional materials. Assist in providing testing accommodations. Assist in related instructional work as required. Utilize special skills and abilities by assisting in instructional programs in areas such as foreign language, arts, crafts, music, and similar subjects, and also assist students with specific health-related activities as appropriate. According to enrollment data reported by New York State Department of Education that they receive from the district, and the most recent is for the 2021-22 school year, 659 students, or 15% of students are classified as students with disabilities. Out of the 659, approximately 66 of them are minority students. Students who are recommended for intensive student-to-staff ratio require intensive and constant adult supervision to engage in learning. When a student is recommended and the CSC placement is approved by the Board of Education, the IEP must state who will be in the class. who will be in the class and the specific ratio. Considering all, I have the following questions. I don't look for an answer tonight. I did send an email that you all should have received. What is the district's rationale for not having certified teaching assistants? How was the need for teaching assistants being addressed? Are power professionals providing instructional support? How many power professionals are in possession of a New York State teacher assistant certification? Will the district entertain the idea of creating the position of teacher assistant? It is no secret that there is a significant learning loss due to the COVID-19 pandemic. According to data, once again from NICED, only 32% of students in grades three through eight who took the New York State ELA test showed proficiency at a level three and above. Also, only 35% of students in grades three through eight who participate in New York State math tests showed proficiency at level three and above. This data alone to me shows that it's an early indication of the need for teaching assistants in the classroom so that our children can receive the best educational experience afforded to them. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Morris, yeah. So, I didn't see your name on the email, so if you can, okay, no, I just want, I just want to make sure if you can please send it to us again and if you can also reach out to our district clerk with those questions because it was a little hard for her to take them all down so quickly, that would be Veronica, the third one. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
I'm not as prepared as everyone else, but I did have a question about transportation. Oh, my name, right, and address, sorry, I'm not prepared. Irene Morales, 84 Kime Avenue. I recently realized that there's still no busing from my side of North Babylon to the high school. I'm on Kime. I seem to have, I went here when Michael Fogel was hit by a car on Deer Park Avenue during school. We were walking, 97. I was walking to the high school. I lived on weeks at the time. My, I know I'm a little late to the game. My son starts high school in September and I'm called the bus district, he has no bus. He has to cross Southern State Parkway and Deer Park Avenue. I know I drive it every day. No one's trying to let you turn. No one's trying to let you walk and these kids are walking in the snow. I was told to come here to address it.
So, hi, my name is Malachetti and I am a parent as well, right? And I live on Woods Road, so, and this has been something that, again, you know, we, we have tossed over here. Right now, it's, the guidelines, one mile away, right, for the high school? Is it more?
A bird's mile.
It's one mile.
Right.
Yeah.
So, again, I li- I live on Woods. I, I live on Woods, so I understand it, it is an issue. I've also raised it and we have to, you know, definitely discuss it, especially during the winter months when the sow is, the snow is pushed up on, on the highway and you can't even, sometimes there's not even a traffic. So, we are concerned about it. I can't say it's gonna be addressed, but it's something that we have to have a discussion about. But right now, it's, it's the mile marker, like you said. And we've spoken about crossing guards with the county at certain periods of time. We can reach out to that again because, again, I feel it's a very difficult situation, crossing Southern State Parkway, myself included. I've been on a walking spree and I, I walk to my kids' games. It's a challenge. So, I, we understand.
So, how do we start to, because I, you know, was told, well, I was told by transportation that North Babylon, we chose, like, so how do you become? Like, everyone gets bused in. I think it's like one or the other for the most part, from what I've learned now.
How do you change those guidelines?
Like, I, well, when do we get to, when do we get to choose again? When do we get to vote on that then?
Yeah, so if it wanted to be done, it would have to be done in public, right? Has to be put on a ballot, right, Doug?
So, essentially, it would be somebody from the public would have to submit a petition that would be voted on at the next annual meeting and election next May.
So, like, me? I have to write it to who? I know. Alright.
I would love to give you legal advice, but I can't.
We could, um, Doc, yeah, Dr. Graham said, please email him and again, we'll at least figure out the procedures and the findings. Again, it's a whole, it's, it's not just as simple as getting it on there, right? Because it has to be a community-wide thing. Is it taxes involved with that? Different bus routes? It goes on the budget, right? So, this budget has been approved for what we have during transportation for this school year that's upcoming. So, again, that's why it does need to go on a ballot because there will be some costs involved to the whole district if decided to move that way. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jen Dina Tally Mitchell, Alfred Street. Going off of transportation, I've exited the last couple of meetings. I'm gonna continue to ask, have we moved forward anywhere with the contract with the bus drivers?
So, their contract is out beginning June, July 1st, so there have been no meetings scheduled as of yet.
Okay, I know a few meetings ago, you had told me that, I'm going back a while because I know I've been asking this question for over a year. I know originally there was, the union had decided, had agreed to put an addendum onto the contract because I know their, their contract is with, I believe, three different work groups and their, their union had agreed to put an addendum on to, to go to talks. This was back with Eschbachs. I don't believe the district or the union ever met at the table to discuss that. And then I know, I've asked multiple times, I know we just lost the bus driver, I believe, on Friday, who is now working for the company that we are now contracting that route out to. What is the price difference when we contract out a route compared to when we do it in-house?
So, an in-house route is definitely cheaper. It's factoring in all the cost. An out-of-district ride's a little less than half. Once everything's factored in.
Okay, so it's, my point is, we're losing bus drivers. We're gonna have to continue sourcing from out-of-district, from contracts, which are gonna cost us as a pack, as taxpayers, a lot more money when it comes to contracting out routes than going to the table and talking to and making it happen that we're paying our bus drivers, I think he left for $6 more an hour? Okay, I know there's more to it. I know that we can't compete with Suffolk, we can't compete with them with their sign-on bonuses. We can't compete with them for a lot of the holiday pays and stuff like that, but we can compete with them. We can compete with what Deer Park is paying, which is more than what we're paying. And I'm just saying that going into the next school year because if we do decide, if this does go on as a, as an item to have the distance from the high school, because I remember, I'm talking back in 2099, late 99, it was changed from just being a mile to any part of the school to a mile to the front door of the school, if I'm correct. Is that, that's what the requirement is because going into high school, I wasn't supposed to have a bus, but they changed it back in the late 90s that it was, instead of just a mile to the school, it was a mile to the front door of the school, whatever. But if, if we're talking about possibly busing students, and I completely understand having to walk across Deer Park Avenue in the snow is not something I would necessarily want my child to do either. That's, it's very dangerous. But if we're talking about that, we don't even have the bus drivers. The late school bus out of Moses had to be canceled last week, am I correct on that? Because we don't have enough bus drivers to even cover our normal routes. So, I would ask the board, the district, to please consider going to the table with the union and before July 1st, start making a plan because contract negotiations, just because the contract's up in July doesn't mean you go to the table in July. You should go to the table before the end of the contract, not that you're having a contract out of, that, that's outdated for, for years. So, that is mine. I hope that you, I, I, I come every meeting, you know, I'm gonna continue to ask these questions and, and, and it's something that we're losing money to put towards children in the schools in order to pay contracts to bus our children to the school, which we can't even do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Alejandro, 24 Falls Fifth. Excuse me. I had asked at our last PTA meeting, Dr. Graham was there, just tell me if I'm wrong. I had asked about staffing for ESY and I thought you told me that that was being presented tonight?
I did. That was on the personnel agenda? I'm just checking. Yeah. Lot of pages, sorry. Anything else? Yeah, the, the teachers are on there for special education teachers, extended school year program. The service providers like speech teachers, occupational therapists, substitute special education teachers, like security guards, school psychologists, registered nurses, so those were all approved within the personnel agenda this evening. And if you're looking at the personnel agenda, like when you go back on the computer later and click on that attachment, it's pages 13 through 18 where you see the extended school year staffing. You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Nicole Gergenti. I am 83 Pickwick. My son's in MGB, he's a kindergartner. I just wanted to touch base. I contacted Mr. Rose this week. I have some concerns related to district technology and acceptable use. Just some general comments. When I'm on the school website, I cannot access the Chromebook policy. That's the first thing you should know. I should be able to access the acceptable use policy from the district website. I also cannot do that. My concerns related to technology have to do with my kindergartner. They have Chromebooks. I was opposed to him having one. I accepted that he had one. And I, I realize that, you know, I'm a teacher. I'm a very tech-forward teacher. I have my ITSE certification, like, I'm all for teaching with technology. I think it's wonderful. My son does first in math. I saw all those wonderful things that you just had at the beginning of the meeting. So good. He's gotten student of the month. He loves to be involved in those things. He's in kindergarten. Our Chromebooks allow the students, first of all, there's a landing page, it's beautiful, it has all the different apps that they use in the classroom. That's wonderful. All great things. They have access to YouTube Kids. Why? I mean, I don't understand any educational value in that and as a parent, right, I monitor my student's technology, my student, that's the teacher in me, I monitor my child's technology use very strictly. He doesn't have an iPad. He only uses the Chromebook for first in math and like, you know, maybe ABC, which is ad-laden. I don't know why we can't block those with GoGuardian, but, you know, and PBS Kids, things like that. He attends aftercare and I have addressed this with Mr. Rose, I've addressed this with Almost Home. In aftercare, they have opportunity to use their Chromebooks. Fine, totally fine. But I didn't know that these young guys had access to YouTube Kids and I wouldn't because my child knows he's not allowed to use YouTube. The children in the aftercare program, maybe they're watching YouTube, he sees that they have it. Okay, fine. With regard to acceptable use, I can't read the policy. I know I signed off on something, you know, but I can't refer back to it, so I don't know what it says, but the ability to change the restrictions on YouTube Kids to older children to nine-to-12 filter is as easy as solving a multiplication problem of nine times three. As a parent, if I had this installed on my own device, I would have much more agency over what they're able to access. I would be able to log in with my Google ID, all those different things and set all the restrictions. Through a school, school Chromebook, I cannot do that. I would have to log in with my own Google ID. I don't think I can actually do that. I cannot set limitations. I can set an individual password, but I didn't even know he had access to this. So, before I knew this, students were using his Chromebook and giving him access. I looked at his history and his data and it said, super, super, super scary videos. He doesn't know how to read very well. He's actually at an A benchmark. He is below grade. He has AIS. He is in kindergarten math. In his search history, I saw nine x three, nine times three, 21. It was as simple as nine times three, 21, to show my son these very inappropriate videos and switch him to a nine-by-12 filter. What is the educational value of any kindergartner, any pre-K student, any first grader, any second grader? I mean, up to like fourth or fifth grade, having access to YouTube Kids and with GoGuardian and having that and being a Google district, why are we not having the teachers approve the content for the students so that only the students can access what is educationally appropriate? So, say a teacher wants to show like Art Hub for Kids and have them do a, a drawing tutorial. I'm an art teacher. Absolutely, totally appropriate. I teach sixth grade. I also teach high school. I've taught elementary. Totally appropriate. Why is my son able to get access to these horrifying videos and then when I reset the filter because of the algorithm, it's still suggesting content that's terrifying? He's six years old. What is the purpose, the educational purpose of allowing such young learners to have access to this sort of content? Educationally, please explain. How does it align with the ITSE standards? How does it align with the state standards? Where is it appropriate in our curriculum? I'm all for allowing them to have like educational content, but there are ways. We're a Google district. We have GoGuardian and as a parent, there's another app called GoGuardian Parent. I should have agency over content if you're not gonna restrict this. Now, Mr. Rose was gracious enough to block YouTube Kids for my son. I don't think half of the parents in kindergarten know they have this access. But I do know that other kids in the aftercare program were given access to this nine-by-12, nine-to-12 content. So, what are we gonna do? Why is this appropriate?
Thank you. So, again, that's something that obviously, you know, stronger conversation, feel free to, you know, reach out to the appropriate. Yeah, and
And I'm satisfied with my reply for now, but, and I, I, you know, he was very like responsive to my phone call and why I sent the email with lots of solutions.
Thank you. Like I said, if you want to reach out to Dr. Graham or, you know, Ms. Gillen, feel free to do that as well. Thank you so much.
Oh, what about the thing, I just forgot, why do we have on the website also the Director of Data Services? Do we not have a Director of Educational Technology?
Title. Yeah.
We do have a Director of Technology.
So, when I was looking for who to reach out to, it was difficult to, you know, determine if it was appropriate content.
Okay, we'll make sure we look into that for you too. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nicole Velez, 6 Blue Bell Lane and I'm here to address my daughter's second grade class size. Her class cohort is 27 students and there are two classes there and they're both maxed out at 27. My first question is, what is the cap size for an elementary school classroom?
By board, board policy, it's 30, but we have been working to reduce it. There's a lot of people on this board. Most of, I would probably be safe to say, most of the people on this board would, you know, definitely lean towards, you know, the lower the better, right? And again, Dr. Graham is aware of that and has been working with us for these, you know, situations like that. I know he's had a couple of meetings with some concerned parents as well. I don't know if it was you guys or somebody that you do know, but it is something that we continue to look at. But it is something that we continue to look at and we will address, and we've had some conversations for, you know, again, them to bring towards us. And like he said, you know, sometimes one school may be at the max, and then another building may, you know, not be, and it's, you know, just the way it sits when it happens right now, so.
Okay, I understand, I'm a teacher myself, and I would absolutely implore you to try to find the room to hire a teacher for this section. If we had a third, we would have three sections with eighteen students each in an elementary classroom, which would be absolutely ideal. As a teacher myself, finding time to do formative assessments, with twenty-seven students, that is nearly impossible to do. And I'm a high school teacher, so it's completely different than on the elementary level. But I cannot imagine, and on elementary level, students having the environment, the opportunity to truly learn to their optimal level in a class size that large. And now they've had three years in a row, and I think now this year, it is starting to culminate in some different difficulties. And next year, third grade year is a very important year, and I would really hope that you guys do find the ability to find, to hire a third teacher at Parliament. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Jill Dudley, I coach youth sports in North Babylon, sixth graders prominently, fifth graders also. We've had a few issues, and I'm glad that that drill was brought up because I had quite a few ladies at my practice that day shell-shocked. Like, not my kid, but in the other teams. Teams is what they call them in sixth grade, right? So, they were beside themselves that day, and I had to pull them down a notch. It's not okay. I'm glad it was brought up, I know it's under the bridge now. Second thing was that there's pretty much a sexual offender in their grade that just keeps rushing by. He's suspended, brought back to school, a few of them had told me about him. It's apparently been a thing since elementary school, and I don't want my girls having that in their life. So, I'm taking justification in that, trying to get to you guys about it so that we don't have to go forward with anything more legal or anything, okay? It's like, we work together as a unit, right, guys, like, I mean, that's the way it is. My third thing bringing to the table is that, this is a hard one. Mental issues are the theme of this month, correct? Yes. And it's gone by the wayside a bit. I had a girl on my team have some issues, and she went to her social worker, was told she was going to be reached back out to, and it was not addressed. It was not addressed by anybody. And I'm not okay with that. I'm not about to let any of my girls get hurt, it's not going to happen, and I really hope that you guys are on our side.
Well, I will say for myself and for everyone up here, please make sure that student reaches out to, again, if it's not the first, the second.
She did.
If you could share with some of our staff then tonight, and we'll make sure that we do the reach out.
It's just becoming like almost an epidemic amongst sixth grade at this point, is what I'm witnessing with my girls, and they're not dramatic. Like, I'll tell you straight up, you know how girls can be, okay? This is not drama, this is like real stuff, and I'm not about to let it happen. And we can't let North Babylon be like that.
No, we have to work together, there is definitely an issue, it's in our district, it's in other districts, it doesn't make it any easier for our district that it's in other districts, right? We have to take care of ourselves. I will tell you that everyone up here is, again, it's a major concern, and we will continue to do what we have to to make sure that, you know, the social well-being of all of our students.
Do you recommend any other outlets, like, if that hasn't been the correct one because she did all the outlets? Is there anything they're lacking, or just, you have to be persevering as a person that's in mental, like, neglect, like, what do you do?
Again, I'm not a mental professional, there are multiple, I would believe, in our district, including the social workers, the psychologists, the principals.
And when it comes to like physical health, physical health, physical like issues, they should be pretty much there for them, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to know that.
Our belief is.
I'd like to know that.
I would say if there was an issue with someone not reaching back out to a child who had approached an individual and was told was going to be reached out, then the parent or guardian of that child needs to reach out to the next level within that chain of command, right? So assistant principal.
Maybe you do with your mental professionals that maybe enhances that a little bit, so that they don't let loose on the kid that might have a problem?
I think that there's ongoing training for all of our mental health staff, as there is in any school, and that doesn't mean that it's once in a while and then it's done. I think there has to be ongoing professional development. With that said, if there's a missing piece in, like, closing a loop, I think that the next level, like a building administrator, the assistant principal, the principal, the director of guidance, Ms. Manzi's office, I think that there are a lot of people that, you know, we would hope that then the next call would be made to say, hey, this is something that went missing and we need to make sure that we get this right. So that if a parent or guardian reached out to Ms. Assandras or her staff, and we found that there was a call that was supposed to have occurred that didn't occur, then we would follow up with them.
All right, well, please talk amongst yourselves about it also. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all, I don't see anyone else coming to the, one more?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Cameron Laurel, twenty-three, Yamon to Avenue. I just have a question, are the nurses at Robert Mills Middle School and the high school properly, excuse me, properly trained and caring for the students with type one diabetes or diabetes in general?
I'm going to have Ms. Manzi address that, Erin, thank you for the question. I know that all of our nurses have, you know, significant education to become registered nurses. I just don't know the, you know, right now, I don't have the answer to your question with regard to the specificity of their training, but that's certainly information that we can get, and Ms. Manzi will elaborate if she has anything additionally.
Sure, each student with a medical concern or condition, we're guided by the medical plan shared by the physician. Our nurses work very closely, not only with students' families, but as well as treating physicians. If there are any specific questions, I would be happy to reach out to you and make sure that if there are concerns or questions, that we help you and guide you with the answers.
Thank you.
Hello. Carmela Roselli, eighty-one Miller Avenue. My question is, how many times a student gets suspended before they're expelled? And what exactly is the policy that the schools have? You know, back when my kids were young, my oldest was young, there was a zero tolerance policy. That seems to have fallen to the wayside now, and kids are getting multiple, multiple chances. So I'd like to know exactly what is the policy when kids engage in fighting, you know, when kids bring weapons to school? What does, what do you do about it?
So, very briefly, there is no set standard as far as the number of instances of suspension before that leads to what they call now permanent suspension, as opposed to expulsion. In terms of the guidance for discipline in the district, you'd be referred to the Code of Conduct, which I believe is policy fifty-three hundred. Fifty-three hundred, yeah. So if you have any questions specifically addressed to that, then you would refer to the Code of Conduct.
You can't just say it right now, I have to go look through the whole Code of Conduct.
What is your specific question, ma'am?
My specific question is, what is the disciplinary action for students who engage in fighting, who start fights, who bring weapons to school?
Okay, so there's no set standard, right? And the law does not allow for a set standard or a single punishment in relation to a particular offense, right? So, it's, each matter is taken on the facts that arise during the course of that particular circumstance. So for example, not every child that engages in fighting is going to get the same penalty necessarily, nor is it going to be better or worse than a child that engages in stealing or cutting class, or things along those lines. The law does not allow school districts to set a finite number of suspension, like days of suspension, or a particular penalty when a child engages in certain misconduct.
Yet, if they're five minutes late, they get detention.
That's not a comparison, ma'am.
It is, because lateness is being penalized more than students who fight.
No, it's not.
You know what, students are fighting, they're coming back, they're fighting again. This is an ongoing thing, especially at the middle school with the fighting, and I'd like to know exactly what specifically. I heard, I got the email, I got the phone call, we are handling it, we're working on it. What exactly is being done to mitigate the fighting?
Well, that's a building-level issue that is addressed by the building.
It's a district-level issue.
Okay.
Because the middle school is part of the district.
There are, and I'm sure Dr. Graham can speak to this and Ms. Manzi can speak to this better than I can, but there are district-wide and building-wide initiatives to address social-emotional learning. So to the extent that any of these issues are arising, whether it's consistently or not, right? Bullying, harassment, every, all these things are addressed via the curriculum, via the staff, right? You hear that the teaching staff, almost twice in the last month, you know, has been lauded for what they've been doing with the students and the staff. So, it's a district that takes that very seriously. So I can't imagine that, well, I'll stop right there, thank you.
Okay, well, who would I get that specific information from then? Since you're not able to tell me exactly what they're doing to stop the kids from fighting.
I would say that. You should speak to your building-level administrator as to that particular information, if you desire the Code of Conduct, it's available on the district's website. If you have questions about what's going on or what actions have been taken at the middle school, I know Ms. Assandras has already fielded phone calls or questions and concerns from parents and families, and had a lot of those conversations with parents and families. So if you have any questions about some things that have been put in place into the middle school to help reduce the number of incidences that have occurred, then she would be the person to talk to.
Yes, I've already spoken to her, I get general information and not specifics. Thanks a lot.
Hi, I'm Melissa Papaleo, one oh one Lakeland. I have a son in the middle school and a daughter in the high school. Mine's kind of like a three-point bullet question. The first question I want to address is, why does the district have a no-fail policy for its students? A teacher cannot fail a student in any grade. They have to be given a passing grade, even if they don't do the work. Why is that?
I'm not sure that's the case, Ms. Skilin is shaking her head that that's not the case, so I think she would know, I guess what she's saying is students could fail?
There is no district policy as a no-fail policy for students?
It's not in writing. I've talked to a number of different teachers, and across the board, there are students that are being pushed through.
I can't, I, I'm like a little dumb down, I don't have any answer to that because there is no district policy or protocol for practice that comes from the middle school or the high school that says a teacher cannot fail a child. In fact, we have constant conversation with teachers about their grades and where they are, but not about a child not being able to pass. So if you would like to email me or give me a call to discuss this further, I'd be more than happy to, you know, if there's something specific that you don't want to say here, out, we can have that conversation. But there is no district policy or practice that says a child cannot be failed. In fact, we pay a lot of money for summer school, so I know, and we host summer school here in this building where we have students attend, so there are kids who are failing.
Okay, to piggyback on the lady that came before us. How can the district build a no, a zero-tolerance policy to make our students feel safer in the schools? Because I'm, if you looked at a thousand students, call it twenty kids maybe, are the ones that are really constantly the same kids creating a problem. Telling a female student, "I'm going to spread your legs and penetrate you," is not a safe environment for a child. And in all honesty, in a grown-up world, if any man said that to a woman, that would be considered a threat of rape. So there are students that are going through this right now. There are boys going through issues of being told they're going to get it after school. "I'm going to get you on the bus." I understand that we can't just throw kids out of the district, but you have a lot of kids there that are going to school, that are not doing as well as they should because of the fact they're worried about their own safety. So what can us as a community, because I honestly don't care what goes on outside of North Babylon, to make our students feel safe? Anybody?
I think one of the easiest places of entry is the Code of Conduct, as we were discussing earlier, the Code of Conduct is policy fifty-three hundred, that deals with what are the acceptable actions within school, and not prescriptive in terms of penalties for a particular offense, but it does, I think, get to some of the philosophical issues that we're dealing with and that you're addressing. So, right now, Ms. Butler sent the Code of Conduct out to our building administrators to begin an annual review of that policy. And that's something that we'll be discussing at future meetings, both with the board and, I would imagine, in a meeting like this in public as well. And we would be gathering some information. So anytime the board reviews policy, there is an opportunity for a draft to come to the board, and then there's an acceptance policy, a practice around the policy. So it would be discussed by the board at the table, it would be posted online, that's when the community has an opportunity to weigh in on a policy. And then prior to a second read and adoption, the board would then consider any of that feedback that they receive. So I think that's the process that we're starting right now, that we hope to move to an annual discussion cycle for the adoption and evaluation of the Code of Conduct. That's probably a good starting point, and that's just based on the question coming to me, you know, that came to the, like, my head the first thing, right? So I think that there are other things that we could do, clearly there are some concerns at the middle school. I don't think that, again, not to minimize feelings, but when I'm speaking with kids, for example, the group that I spoke with today, there's, I think, differences in how people are feeling, and we can't minimize if somebody feels unsafe in any particular instance. So we have to make sure that we're doing things to address those students that don't feel safe for any reason. I think that perhaps if we have a community forum, if we're talking about it, if we're getting these things out in the open, that might be a good place to start.
Where is the board's position on having armed guards on the property? There are many school districts that are looking at that. What's our board's policy on this, or are we looking at it? Like, my concern is both inside the school and outside of the school. Do we need to have something seriously happen to a student, to a school, to a building, to teachers, before we actually do something? Or are we going to be proactive and protect our students both in and out of the building, protect our teachers? Because honestly, students are harassing teachers just as much as they're harassing each other. It's not fair to the teachers, it's not fair to the staff, it's not fair to the kids. So, are we going to have a policy on that as well, like the other schools are looking at?
It's actually, in the next session, a part of our board discussion, we're going to start a conversation about armed guards and moving forward in a conversation in the timeline. So again, something that the board is going to start to discuss and ask administration to look into, the different scenarios that could be brought to us. There's a lot of different, you know, ways you can go about it, and how we're going to go forth in putting it out there to the public, for the people that are for it, and people that may be against it, and anyone in between. So it's not just a quick decision to be made, it's something that has to be done collaboratively amongst the board, administration, and the community, and all the stakeholders involved. amongst the board, administration, and the community, and all the stakeholders involved. So once we're done with the questions, we did have time set aside to start the conversation. So it is going to be part of our conversation tonight.
I'm just concerned. Honestly, I'm sure all of you have children. I have two daughters, and honestly, in middle school, high school, elementary, college, if anybody said something like that to my daughter, it would be a huge problem. And I can't imagine any of you on the board allowing your child to be spoken to like that.
Agreed.
So we need to do something quicker.
Agreed. Thank you.
Hi, Sarbelia Benedict, 215 Van Buren Street. I'd actually, I'm, I've been here for 13 years. I'm originally from Queens. I am a student, I am formerly a student from inner-city schools, and I was also a student in a high school with armed guards. I was in a student that had the NYPD patrol around my high school. And I can tell you this, that it does not improve any sort of feeling or sense of safety for the students or the parents, and if anything, it perpetuates more violence, it perpetuates more issues within, amongst the students, and even amongst the students towards teachers. There really isn't any positive experience that I can tell you as a former, like, as someone who went, who was from New York City school system. The answer to that, the answer to safety, is pretty much allocating your energy and your time where there is, there is a need. When it comes to, for example, being proactive, when it comes to bullying issues, maybe it can start being addressed on a more, on a more specific manner in the elementary level. Because as some of the parents expressed, you know, a student, it starts at the elementary level. Whether as parents we want to accept it or not, our children know a lot more than we think, and sometimes by avoiding certain subjects to be addressed within the homes and within, you know, within their, the grown-ups, it's pretty much just ignoring something that the kids might be exposed to that they're not. Also overseeing and overlooking certain other issues, the fact that just because, if we do implement a zero-tolerance policy, you're overlooking and you're ignoring the fact, the individual, of the individual student. Does the individual student have a special need? Does the individual student have a behavioral issue? Does the individual student have any social or economic inequity? So by just clumping children up and saying, "Okay, you had a fight, or you initiated a fight," you're ignoring as to why it was initiated, or why it happened, or maybe the child is impulsive, or maybe the child, I don't know, is, you know, is, has some type of economic insecurity. The administration would be ignoring that, and that wouldn't be fair. The other thing is that I've been wondering if there is a code of conduct that is for high-need students. Because I feel like high-need students, special-need students fall as well, like, a big, like, this big generic code of conduct, you know, kind of ignoring their needs, their special needs, or their unique needs, or the fact that they're victims of bullying, or the fact that they might be, they might react impulsively to a bullying situation, or harassment situation. So they're punished for maybe something that they can't help, but they're just defending themselves maybe the only way they know at the moment. When it comes to also the bullying, or the harassment, or the abuse, or whatever it is, when it comes to your gender, or your sex, when it comes to someone speaking to a girl a certain way, or a derogatory way, or expressing, that also starts in the elementary school, at the elementary level. What is being done to educate these students on both sides, on what is not acceptable and what will get consequences? You know, are we going to penalize the girls because they decided to, you know, maybe stand up for themselves? You know, are we going to pay more attention, you know, because statistically speaking, nationwide, it is overlooked when girls are harassed at school, you know, because it's verbal, it's not physical. But it eventually does turn physical, as we've seen or we've heard when it comes to our school district. Like, what can be done to address this at an elementary level? The bullying, the trying to avoid the violence, and also trying to protect kids that are neurodiverse, or neurodivergent, you know, when it comes to these situations? What can be done by you, and what can be done by a community that isn't necessarily require zero-tolerance policy, or doesn't require, you know, security guards that are armed? Because we also, from experience, know that the BIPOC community, which is a lot of the students in North Babylon, can fall victims to that, and even neurodivergent students to some misconception maybe amongst an armed guard, or some altercation that can lead to issues as well. So what can be done by the district?
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so a lot of notes are being taken up here, and again, these are things that are in progress all the time. As, you know, Dr. Graham had mentioned, you know, it's a constant review of, you know, better and practices, and working on all the things that are going to make us better every day. So is there any other questions? Otherwise, I'm just going to jump into, you know, the conversation about the armed guards. So I'm just going to start with Ms. Callahan, because I know she's the one who brought it to, you know, fruition, and she can get started.
I did bring it up, and my, the point of me bringing it up was not because of the fighting in the middle school, or because of that. The point that I brought it up was because, obviously, with the escalation of force, a security guard without a gun does nothing for the safety of anybody in the school when somebody comes into the school with a gun. And our children are sitting ducks in these schools. We know that there are school shootings everywhere, and it's only a matter of time before, you know, God forbid, it happens here or anywhere else. Other districts are implementing them, and I'm not saying that we need to go hire, you know, just some random guy who got a security job and got a gun permit to be a security guard. I'm saying hiring trained professionals that are, were in fight-or-flight type of scenarios, retired law enforcement, retired military, and that is the criteria for being, for a lot of these districts that they are hiring for. I'm a firm believer that the, that this is something that we need. This is the world in which we live in today, unfortunately. And I am in law enforcement, I am trained, I don't go anywhere with my children unarmed, so I hate the fact that I send them to school every day unarmed, knowing that that's more than likely where they will be hurt. I don't, and that's just how I feel. I understand not everybody feels that way in regards to the thing with the NYPD. I can't speak on that. I never even knew NYPD was in New York City schools. I've been in there for almost 20 years, and they're on, they've been unarmed since I've been there, so I don't know what they were doing in those schools, but this is how I feel regarding my district here, and that's it. I guess the rest of the board can say how they feel about it.
Yeah, no, thank you. I don't know if anyone else wants to make a comment or not, but I know...
I would like to see how the rest of the board feels about it, their opinions on it.
Again, the board can, the board can start the discussions if they want. If anyone else wants to jump in, feel free to. I'm not going to force anyone to say or not say, as this is the beginning of the conversation, and there's a lot of, you know, a lot of stuff to go through way before you grab someone's opinion, whether they feel guns should be here in the school. At least, that's, again, that's for me to say that. So we had, if anyone else wants to speak, feel free. If not...
So, yeah, I don't mind jumping in. I mean, I tend toward not having them. That being said, it's something we need to look at, right? We need to see the expense. What are we going to have to sacrifice in order to put whatever number of armed guards we're talking about? You know, we have a lot of needs in the district, and we're going to have to, you know, we always put safety first, you know. Is an armed guard at every school the best way to do that? I think we need to look at that. I know, you know, we're going to talk about, you know, what the cost is. I agree, if we do that, it would have to be, you know, retired police, retired military, they would have to have special training in dealing with students, with younger children, because it's not like being out on the street, excuse me, right? It's totally different. So I think, I'm sure that there's training that can be done. If we do do that, I would like them the ability to train the staff, whether it's active shooter drills, whether it's to make sure that we're doing it right, so that they can take a look at that. But those are things I think we need to get information on, and discuss, and see, you know, where we can land on that, and what makes sense for North Babylon as opposed to, you know, every district on Long Island.
Thank you, Bob.
Is it possible for us to get more information? I mean, this is the first time we're discussing it, and I know very little, so if we can gather some information from the attorneys and from surrounding districts, I know that there are districts that do, some that don't, the pros, the cons, just, I'm not in law enforcement, so I would really need to be educated, to make an educated decision, or have an opinion.
Right. As with everything else we do as a board, right? If a board member has a question or a concern, they send it my way. With that being said, when it was sent my way, I sent it over to Dr. Graham, who has done some preliminary things and does have some information. Again, I agree with you, Heather, I'm not in law enforcement, and was never in the military myself. You know, it's just something that, again, as a person, you know, that, again, I didn't work in it, but, you know, it's that thing too, of just like, sometimes, you know, not just armed guards, but metal detectors, right? Is that something we really do want? Do you want your children to have to walk through a metal detector every day to get into school?
If it means them not getting shot, then I don't care.
And this isn't a debate, no, not here to debate, I'm just saying, these are questions that we have to bring to ourselves.
I know, but some, I just think we need to look at the greater picture sometimes, and we need to, like, parents are coming to us with these concerns of safety, safety, safety. And I feel like sometimes we all have these same concerns, like, I have children that are going into the high school and the middle school, and that seems to be where we're having the bulk of the violence in these schools, and it's really a huge concern of mine. And coming off the board, I came on this board, and I, the week, the last meeting I was at, I asked Frank about the mantraps. Do you remember? That was that Thursday meeting. And that Tuesday following was that Nashville shooting where they shot out the window of the door, and they got in. So I just, it's, now, it was almost like, now I'm coming off the board, and I just, I really want to make my, drive my point home, that whether I'm on the board or I'm not on the board, this is going to be a point that I bring up constantly.
That's fine. And I just...
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
So, I'm not in law enforcement, I am a United States Marine, so I do have some experience, but, and I also, I also work in a school, and I work in a high school, and it is, it is a difficult situation, and, you know, I agree with pretty much what everyone has said, is that we, I really do want to get information. There's been times that I've been at a school, and it's a scary situation, you know, when something happens in your school. I've worked in a situation where there's been a false alarm spoofing, or whatever they call it, and they called our school, and they made threats to me as the principal. And I, it's something that I do think is very important, and should be a major topic, and really, it's hardening our schools. I mean, schools are soft targets, and I think every step that we take towards making it safest possible is something that is going to benefit our kids. When you look at the school shootings around the country, it is a little different than Long Island because of this sense that, I mean, you could be in Tennessee, and it might take you 20 minutes for a police officer to, or law enforcement to get to your high school. So I don't know if there's different types of plans where, I don't know what's out there. I'm like, Heather, I don't know what's out there. I don't know if there's different types of plans where you can have an individual that can get to your school within a minute, and I wouldn't be against it, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be against that. And I think that we have to really get as much information as possible to try to make it the safest for our kids. We were, had a meet-the-candidate's meeting, and I mentioned the fact that we had Carl Place, and Carl Place is the only school shooting that's ever taken place in Long Island, and it was the security guard that did the shooting, because he was an armed guard. So like Mr. Shide said, I don't want just a random person with the power to do that. I want, I want, I want it to be something that's going to create an environment that's going to help our kids and harden our schools. So that's my feelings on it.
So if I can just, and I don't want to, I just want to say one thing, Keisha, and then you can go.
Yes.
What we're addressing with armed guards is nothing, is not going to do anything to help with the safety, I shouldn't say nothing to help with the safety, because it will help with some of the safety, but it's not going to help with the bullying and the fighting within the school. Those are things that we need to address, and whether that's, you know, more psychologists, more social workers, teachers more involved, whether it's more disciplined, and I think that's, I'd like to attack that plan first, while we're getting information on armed guards. Like I said, I lean toward not doing it, because I don't know what the response rate is on Suffolk County PD to get here in time. Certainly, anything more than a minute is terrifying to think about, right?
Oh, it's going to be more than a minute, for sure.
That being said, you know, like, when you talk about safety, you can go to the ends, right? We're talking about, you know, metal detectors, you know, kids being wandered when they're coming into school. Most, and again, this is a generality, most school shootings have happened because doors have been left open. We really need to get the mantraps in, the security stuff done, we need to get the building management system where we know that these doors are closed, and if they're open, we can get a security guard, security aide over there to make sure that the doors are closed, and I think that goes a lot to the safety of our students too.
Can I say one other thing?
No.
No, Keisha's up.
No.
Keisha's up.
No. I'm just trying to sort through what wasn't said. However, being a graduate of North Babylon, and having three kids, as of right now, one in the middle school, one in the elementary school, getting ready for the middle school, and soon to be two in the high school, right? I think what we're discussing, and this is where it starts, right, here, not just privately, but publicly as well, having this grander conversation. We have to get an idea of where, not just we are, but where our community is as well. And it starts with this, right? I think we can all agree that we need to have a larger conversation, not similar to the year in which I graduated. I often use the analogy, we don't wear the same pants we wore in fourth grade. Why? Because they don't fit us now. We need to have that conversation also based on where we were, but also our needs, and how we can best fit those needs, not of where we want to be, but currently where we are in the state of our world now. So I think it starts with this right now, right here.
Thank you, Ms. Rivers.
Can I say something, Ms. Rivers? First of all, my pants from fourth grade do not fit me. Thank you, Dr. Clough. But I do want to say something about the high school and the middle school, and I know that I didn't hear a lot of it, but they are doing things to promote behavior and expectations. I actually stole the three Rs, which my kid says, respect, responsibility, and relationships, and it's something that I've seen. Obviously, we definitely need to continue to do work, but I do see elements with, and buy-in from teachers and from administrators as far as like a multi-tiered system of support throughout the building, and I do know that is happening, because I do have children in the middle school and the high school, and I see branding, I see the conversation, I've seen... school, and I see branding, I see the conversation, I've seen presentations. And it's, it's a challenge. And I do know that, like Dr. Graham said, is that they are reviewing, and they're going to continue to work. But it isn't as if there, we don't have leaders in the district that are trying to address behavior. And I think that it's going to continue, and it's going to be more work. But I do see a lot of effort from the staff and from administrators in addressing it. And I'm looking at it, I'm hoping that it continues to work and continues to impact it. And it's not a light switch, it's not a, you know, a magic pill. It's something that I think is going to be continued work in a building-wide process.
We're just having a discussion right now.
Can I chime in about it?
Go ahead, yeah.
I'm not against armed guards at all, but I would prefer to know more information about agencies, and taking it out of our hands to train and all of that stuff. So I would like to know about more about outside agencies that, that hire.
Yeah, like I said, you know, Dr. Graham has done some, you know, preliminary work, and he has some stuff. We're thinking about, again, getting together, to put together a timeline. But, Dr. Graham?
Yeah, I mean, the good position that we're in is that other places have done this before. So if the board and the community chose to move forward in this direction, there are models out there that we could at least start to look at and hopefully replicate some places that are doing, you know, or utilizing armed security guards successfully. You know, there are, there are options for consideration that we, we can gather information for the board. One is, as Kat just mentioned, the outsourcing piece. You know, there's an element of, do we utilize our current staff? Do we utilize a private company? Do we utilize our current staff for their current capacity and supplement with armed guards from an agency? And those are, again, all three of those iterations are being done in some district right now. So we have the ability to reach out to our colleagues in other districts and gather that information of how they've done it. There are costs, as Mr. Scheid mentioned, associated with that, and those are costs that we could model out and share with the board and with the community as well. I think that a number of board members have made the point that, you know, we do need to look at the security vestibules as well, that an armed security guard on campus, near campus, whatever we choose, is not the sole solution. So there is a degree of hardening of the campuses that needs to occur. I think that community feedback is going to be very important in terms of this conversation moving forward. So those are pieces of information that I will gather, share with the board, and we can use that in our continuation of the discussion of the topic.
Perfect. Thank you. We did put it on as a board discussion item because it is, again, preliminary, and we're not really prepared to have any questions from the public on it. It will be a time for that to happen. This was just, again, to address some of the situations and to let people know that we are talking about it and considering it. And there will be a process to this that we will reveal hopefully sooner than later. And so, again, just, if the board doesn't have any other questions, I'm going to put in a motion to adjourn the meeting. I need a motion? Motion, second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. So, thank you, everybody.